It's great.
Called a meeting to order? I think all seven of them are here.
For awhile.
For awhile, May 1st.
Aren't you gonna get bored and wander out?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's where you need to be. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of May 1, 2018. I have a question, Gerald. Item 10.1.
Which one?
The letter of credit.
The letter of credit. Is that the one we had in study session a couple of years ago? 25,000 this one here?
It was originally on the agenda last time, but we hadn't gotten the approved amount from DEQ yet.
Okay.
And when we got that, it was changed a little bit more.
So it's not a second one?
So, no, it's the same one. We pulled it off the agenda last time and brought it back.
Okay.
There, do you want to tell them anything else about it?
Okay, I understand.
25,000, but it covers our closure and post-closure assurances with the EQ.
So, how many cells do we have? Just to run.
Oh, I don't know, Luke.
I have one cell open right now, sir.
Okay.
And a whole bunch closed?
Yeah, a whole bunch closed.
Okay. Anyone else? Luke, item three, discuss stormwater master plan and FEMA regulations. Robert?
Thank you, Eric. City manager. After you present an update on stormwater management in the city of Enid. Here, and we're gonna cover a few items, which is, of course, stormwater management, what that entails and how we develop with that. We'll talk about the stormwater master plans. We have a couple of master plans out there covering the city. We also want to talk about FEMA and the Federal Emergency Management Administration's risk map, which is an update to their floodplain map that they actually have a public notice on right now that's under review. Talk about the regional detention concept, how that works, why we're doing those facilities. We'll get into some storm. We'll talk about our basins, where they lay out. And, of course, we want to talk about some accomplishments over the last number of years, as well as part of stormwater management relies on some responsibilities or requirements from the developers. Okay. Stormwater management. What we typically refer to is the 100-year event, which is a storm that has a 1% chance of happening in any one year. So, unless you raise reach up to 50, probably a good chance you hadn't even seen a storm of any of that size. And most of us haven't on a large scale. We're gonna get into the priorities that were established by the McLoughlin report, where I don't know. And then on stormwater management, also want to talk about, there's two ways basically to make that work. One is you move the water away from the people. Detention does that, channel improvements to some extent, and culvert works. But also, sometimes there's a need to move the people away from the water. Sometimes you just can't move the water, and you have to move the people. And we'll get into that a little bit as well. Master plan. There was a 1975 master plan, and it basically moved the water downstream. It was a channel improvement type of project. And for its time and date, probably had a lot of good points, but it just moved the water downstream. In, from 1987 to 97, we developed a plan, it wasn't adopted in 97, to go to regional detention instead of just moving the water downstream. And we'll show how that works. That slows the water down, provides the protection by slowing it down and holding it back and not flooding downstream. There's been amendment to the master, or there've been plans added. The North Boggy Creek Plan was done in 2001. It was amended in 2007 to include the Crawson Park area. And then we have a Lower Boggy Creek Study, which is still under review. And that one actually is looking at, it's looking at a bypass channel, which is move the water downstream. And it's also looking at another option, which is acquire some property, move the people away from the water, or acquire some property. So it's got set some point. Stormwater study boundaries. These are the master plan boundaries. I want to indicate US 412 across the center of the map, and going north and south, US 81. And the North Boggy Creek, which was done in, adopted in 97, started in 87, actually covered the area that was being developed at that time, and it provided for doing a regional detention facility in this area. It's been kind of expanded across the city, but that was the plan developed. After that date, 2001, the plan was amended to look at the North Boggy Creek Channel, and what could be done on that one. And it was amended in 2007, which provided for doing stormwater detention at Crawson Park. This plan had detention in Oxford, right up in here, which became very difficult to accomplish, and it was amended to prevent the detention on the Crawson Park, where we already had property, and it's worked out quite well. And then we have a Lower Boggy Creek Study, which is from west, from Boggy Creek and North Boggy Creek, out to the connection of Skelton Creek. And that's under study right now, and there's been some, quite a bit of work done on that. Want to talk about priorities? This is a detective committee set up these priorities from the McLoughlin report, adopted in 97, so it was produced in 87. What we've highlighted in green is the projects have been completed. And in blue, where we've provided stormwater protection, a number of these detention facilities have been improved, and we provide improvements to offset development, but they're not complete yet. And then we have some design bid projects on there. We'll point out that the placement of boxes, stormwater boxes and channels, was originally high up in this list. Those have been deferred typically. We're trying to do detention proportionally. We're doing these detention projects in advance of doing the channel improvements, which move the water downstream. If we move it downstream, we want to reduce the flow or have a place for it to go into with detention water. Also, I want to point out, I show this as complete on improving channels on Boggy Creek to Oakwood to railroad. That is not complete at all. The only, the part that's been completed from Oakwood to, basically to our trail trussel, but from there to the railroad trestle is not, is a channel improvement that has not been completed. So, I'm sorry I miscoded that one, but I'm gonna correct that. That's only partially done. On the Boggy Creek Nature Park, that was advanced, and it's been put in place because that property was donated to the city. Some of you commissioners may recall, some may not, but that was donated by the sisters who owned that property early on in the program. And since we had the property, that was one of the projects we moved on quite quickly to put detention in that place. And that's been expanded more recently with development, too. They've been extending that. We have Chestnut West Detention, which is, actually, you have a chance to award that contract tonight, to do, start the construction of that detention. We have Waller Detention, which we're in the process of last year working the school system, but we have not been able to come to a level to provide a joint use there, so that's still working. And we have the Metals Detention, Metals Detention, stormwater detention, that's in the proposed for design in the 2009 year. Okay. 1975 plan, if you look at that plan, it's kind of a representation here, which we have houses down there in stormwater, and then you have development occurs, and it would channel that water and move it downstream. And it does very good protecting for new development, but it's not so good for protecting for downstream or units that may exist further downstream. So, the 1997 plan that was adopted looked at regional detention. And this is the concept, shows regional detention, you put in a detention facility, you slow the water down, you gotta back up, slow it down, and you take in additional water from development, slow it down, so it protects downstream. However, if you notice on this chart, there is an area right in here where, based on this representation, that there still could be some flooding. And that plan also addresses, or the ordinance addresses that by providing onsite detention. And the onsite detention is where we have development occurs. We have regional detention takes care of the main channel. But between that small channel, when the development site and the regional detention can sometimes be overloaded. Onsite detention has a way to solve that. Development is required to mitigate it. And that's where you'll see onsite detention and regional detention. Seems to work good. This, I want to talk a little bit, now that's about, of course, moving the water away from the people. We'll talk a little bit about where you had to move the people away from the water. This is a exhibit out of the North Boggy Creek master plan. We show Broadway on the right, and Grand to the bottom, and you see the north, right there, the north is to the left. This is the Boggy Creek Channel, and you can see there's a couple of railroad crossings here, Burns Northern, Santa Fe, and the UP Railroad. And we have two colors on here. We have a red, which was actually the, since it's made a map, floodplain, and a blue, which we could, was our channel improvements, our detention improvements, can move it into the blue. We save some structures. We see there's a lot of structures in here cannot be protected by that channel improvement or that detention. And that's, and that plan does call for, over time, acquiring properties in there. And we've done some of that. We did that. FEMA risk map. Federal Emergency Management Administration has, has developed a plan for addressing flood insurance. They have developed what's called flood insurance rate maps, and that is basically to provide for cities and other people to, we provide for cities to have a way to allow for residents to have flood insurance within the cities and within the programs that the cities are in those programs. We adopted the program in 1979, so we've been a member since 1979. And along with allowing for flood insurance, of course, it has some regulations that if you're actually in an area that they see as mapped to the floodplain area, the nourishment regulations comply with. Watershed planning. The FEMA has gone away from their original individual channel to a watershed planning mechanism. They call it risk map, it's the term for that. And we are in the Lower Cimarron-Skelton watershed, which is the Lower Cimarron River and the Skelton Stream. So when they did their risk map, starting that program, they actually have developed these four projects for remapping or improving their mapping system. There's one in Kingfisher, Oneokum City, Logan County has the project, and then Enid. So there is a proposed revised Enid firm or flood insurance rate map. Now here, I want to represent a portion of our existing flood insurance rate map, which is shown in blue here. And I'll point out, this is Garrett Road going across the top, and, this is Van Buren going north and south, just on the right side. And the dark blue area here is defined as the flood hazard area, or what FEMA regulates. The green areas are areas that they regulate as well, but they don't have elevations in them. So they regulate them, but they don't give you definite elevation. So that's a concern. It's a little harder to work with those areas for the residents. Okay. They, FEMA's looking to revise that map, or propose to revise that map. They have been doing a study on the Meadow Lake Tributaries, the stores, the waters that come into Meadow Lake, and he's actually come off of Vance Air Force Base as well to some degree. And they studied West Boggy Creek. Those are the two areas that they included in their proposed map revision. They presented their studies, their findings, about a year ago, down in Cushing, and they set up a procedure for revising the map, which is, they actually have provided a notice to the public here in March, March 15th of their updated map. And there's an appeal process, appeal time is in the process right now, 90 days of appeal process that is running. Goes into the middle of June. Okay. This is the proposed changes in the map, and the dark red is the prior map flood hazard area. The lighter red is the additions that they are looking to add to the map based on the detailed study that they've done on the Meadow Lake Tribes and on West Boggy Creek. And the blue is actually area that would reduce, come out of the defined area based on their study. I'm gonna go to a little bit more detailed drawing on, first thing, on the tributaries to Boggy Creek, you can see this Vance Air Force Base, and they have some property in here. And there is a little extension that they show going into the base property into those lower areas, but those are basically lower areas that are where the water stands now, anyway. But I'll point that out. This is a detailed outline of the map that was, that FEMA has produced to this point on West Boggy Creek. And it is from, actually started at the old railroad, Farm Railroad, and extended to just past Garland Road. And I'm gonna go back and look at just closer detail of that map on Oakwood Road. And on Oakwood Road, you can see that there's no structures along Oakwood Road that are in the mapped area. However, if you look at the mall, they do show a, the floodplain going through a corner of the mall building. We're gonna actually appeal that. It does not go into the mall building, that's incorrect. However, it does, there is a, I will point out, there is a truck dock right here at this location, which is lower than the floor, and it does go into that truck dock, which means there is a concern there. The building is protected, but the truck dock is not. And that's an issue that the mall may want to deal with. Okay. Required actions on the map. FEMA's conducting the public notice now. Actually, I think it goes into 14th. closes on the 14th, not the 15th. After that date, FEMA will be in a position to file their final decision on the map after they've gone for the appeal position. We don't know how long that'd take. Anytime after the 15th, they can do that. The city's obligation is to adopt a map by ordinance with revised ordinance, and adopt it, and then have it approved by the Water Resource Board, before adoption, of course. And you'll have about five months, anticipate about five months to get it prepared, brought back to the commission, adopted, and reviewed, and approved by the Water Resources Board. And that will be a requirement to stay into the program. Okay. I want to go on to our regional detention concept. Of course, regional detention, stormwater detention, it basically provides for mitigation for development. It, you know, it provides a relief or allows for development without a major impact on the rest of the users out there. It manages, it also is addressed to manage existing flooding problems, existing flooding conditions. And it also, I want to point out, we have nine detention facilities in place, and about four detention sites that are still planned and are not operating yet because of the funding. This is a regional detention location map, show that, of course, 412 along the bottom, and Highway 81 going up on the right side. And these actually are the priority numbers that were established. And what we show in green are the completed projects, and in blue, the basic facilities that are in operation, detention facilities that are in operation. And then, with the triangle here in the gold are some future projects left to be done. And the four detention sites that are still out there are, this is one at Cedar Ridge Detention, the Metals Detention, and Country Club, where's that? Country Club North Detention right here, three, where is, the fourth one is Waller Detention that we're working on now. A little demonstration on how detention works. This is a normal rain event, storm comes up, you get it up the channel of the creek, and it goes down. With development upstream, or development can increase that by increasing the runoff, and you can see a curve, a curve like this, much higher, and of course, that can get out of the banks and cause some problems. Detention is basically, it takes that area up here, puts it behind a detention facility and stores it, and then releases it at a set race rate, not exceeding the historical rate. So you don't see a higher rate of water. However, there is more water, because development does create more water downstream. Enough area to store that amount of water. That's how the principle works. Stormwater basin boundaries. Again, US 412 going across the middle, and going up and down is US 81. We have Basin A is the West Boggy Creek area, and that's where a lot of elements occur. Basin B is Quail Creek and Boggy Creek, and we also got the tributaries coming in to Meadow Lake from the basin of the areas. Basin C is the North Boggy Creek area. D is the Lower Boggy Creek, which basically picks up these channels, take it out to Skelton Creek. Area E is Skelton Creek, and Area F is basins, tributaries that go into Skelton Creek at about Boggy Creek. And there are some areas out here that drain outside the city, don't drain to these areas, and those are Area X, but they drain away. Accomplishments. Let me talk a little bit about that. Since about 2008, we have completed and filed projects amounting to about $8.1 million investment in stormwater improvements. That includes work on nine stormwater detention facilities, and we've had about 10, 10 channel improvements, 17 culverts, replacements, box culverts, and other projects. And we have 14 property acquisitions in floodplain areas, and I'll go through those. Now, the bridge improvement projects are not in this number. Those are done out of bridge funds or street funds. They're not typically in stormwater. In your handout here, we just list the detention facilities from Garland South down to Pinbrook Square. Pinbrook Square was one that was done more recently because of localized flooding project, and that's been in place. These others are larger regional facilities that have been opening and operating. And again, a location map for these detention facilities that are in place, including Crawson Park Project, and of course, Nature Park, Cherokee, Oakwood West, Garland South, Garland North. This one is, of course, is not in place as of yet. Channel improvements. 10 channels, 17 culverts, and that's the locations of the sites for those improvements. And there's a couple pages of those, as you can see. And then this is the location map, which we've identified over here just by reference number, the location of those improvements that have been in place. Some of those are just basically, over here, a lot of channel improvements and culverts to match up to the existing flow conditions. Property acquisitions. There's been 14 property acquisitions. Rolling Acres Development, some flooding going on in that area. We've acquired four properties in that area, and made some major channel improvements to account for that. North Boggy Creek, there's one property acquired at the Oxford area because of flooding conditions. And then we've acquired nine properties along North Boggy Creek, basically that area showed earlier, and here's a map of those locations. Acquired nine properties along the channel here, where we know we can't make improvements to protect those. And then Rolling Oak, Rolling Acres as well. And then we did one up here that was flooding on North Boggy Creek. There are a number of others in here, of course, many more than would be acquired over time. Developer responsibilities. The principal responsibilities from development is to provide improvements to carry the 2%, or the 50-year storm, 2% chance in any one year, and then they have to route the 100-year to storm. That means there's a channel improvement or an easement to carry this event, but they have the plan for this event, so it doesn't flood structures. Maybe it goes across parking lots, et cetera, but it planned for it. Again, as we talked about earlier, to mitigate the impact between their site and the main channel. Detention usually does that. And then they make an improvement, the ordinance sets out, they make an improvement in the regional detention facility, but many times they can, or instead of that, they pay the impact fee that's put in place to allow for that, because sometimes it doesn't work. That's the presentation. I'd like to try to address or answer any questions.
Explain a box.
Box culvert?
Why do you, why we use it?
A box culvert is typically a concrete structure that's built like a box, and it's built square, because that's an economical way to do concrete construction. They typically use a box when it's, when your pipes get, when you use round pipes, typically cheaper to build, but if you use round pipes, you have to go quite high sometimes. You put a large pipe, it's gotta be tall, or it's not gonna be round. And then it's when a box is more competitive to build, because you can build a box structure, make it, make several cells, and make it wide, and so you can get your roads over the top, such as on Garrett Road and other areas where we have. So we call that a reinforced concrete box, or a box structure, as compared to a culvert, which is typically round or arcs.
Can you go back to the slide on page 15? It's a map with a lot of red on it.
Red's not, not good, is it? That's it. Are you talking about?
That's the one.
Oh, that one.
Nope, go back to that one. That's one.
Yes.
So, the new area, is it just a matter of development upstream has changed, which caused that new area to arise, or is it better study from the last go-around? I mean, talk us through what changed to include the new red areas in the current FEMA study?
FEMA's extended their model. Before, they just stopped here.
Okay.
FEMA does not model to the end of the watershed. They just, they just produce models. This model was done in 1979, and they just modeled to the funding they had available at that time.
Okay.
And, and they stopped it, for whatever reason, they stopped it at that railroad terminal. It's 1979. Now, the plan was updated in 2012, but they didn't extend the model, they just did some updates. I think they added, they added things over to the east side.
Okay.
So they've just extended it. So this area.
The same watershed that was already in existence?
It's the same, it's already there. There has been development in here, there has been detention up here as well. Let me go on to show you those detention sites. So here is the area we're talking about, and there's been stormwater detention improvements in Oakwood West, Garland North, Cherokee Detention, and, it's Garland North up here, and Garland South. So those detention facilities have been put in place, which, which basically are now studies, they have offset the impact of development. But they haven't really solved all the existing problems.
Okay, gotcha.
Robert, were most of these detention areas started after the flood?
Yes.
In 1973, I think.
All of them were started after, after that date. There is one detention I don't show on here, which is the Willow Road Detention. Willow Road Detention was done in 1984. That's the first one. Willow, yes, it is located just south of Willow Road, right in, just south of Willow Road, and just west of Van Buren, known as the soccer fields.
Yes.
Yeah. Joint use.
Okay.
That was done about 1984, and that's the first stormwater regional detention was done. And actually, was done before the regional detention plan was put in place. So there was some good forethought on that. But that was done in 84. And then the rest of these projects came, I don't know, they came after 1987, which is when they, they was first produced and was adopted. The funding became available in 1997.
Questions? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Item four, present and discuss CMB Center Fiscal Year 2017 Annual Report. Kevin here?
Yes.
Kevin?
Hey, Commissioner, City Managers. I appreciate you inviting me out today to discuss some of this stuff. We'll go through, we're gonna touch a little bit about the FY17 Annual Report, but also want to focus on where we currently are in FY18, and then also some of the upcoming stuff that we have coming up. So just taking a look at the financials for FY17. Start with the event revenue. We have our direct event revenue and ancillary revenue, which is all developed around events that we have going on at the Central National Bank Center. Taken to that, the expenses that go with the events that happen gives us our total net operating income. From there, we add in our other income, which the biggest part of that includes the sponsorship and partnership revenue that we have at the CMB Center, giving us our net operating income. We then add in the indirect expenses, and for FY17, the subsidy was just under $502,000. Now, we take a look at that compared to the year before. The year before, it was just under $579,000. It's now just under, for that year, was just under $502,000. So you're looking at about $77,000 savings from FY16 to FY17. A little bit more of a breakdown of comparison that we have here. You'll see FY17, some of the differences, and we're gonna run into this in a business like this, where we're relying heavily on event-driven stuff. You'll see in here that events were down a little bit in FY17, and therefore, the event operating was down. So, we had to bring down personnel and operating expenses quite significantly, and pick it up with the other income area, and that led to the, if you look at it, a 13% savings in overall operating cost of the facility from the previous year. So a fairly drastic or large savings from FY16 to FY17. A couple notes from FY17, some of the highlights. Central National Bank coming on as the naming rights partner to start the year was probably our biggest highlight of the fiscal year. Very exciting for us, and have developed a great partnership with Central National Bank. We had 15 concerts and three family shows, a total of 18. I would call it national touring events, which for a facility this size, and a city this size, is, I would say, rather impressive for some of the entertainment that comes through here. Over 325 events between both the facilities, increase in sponsorship revenue by 53%, which greatly helped to the 13% decrease in operating deficit. Some of the concerts, Kenny Some of the concerts, Kenny Rogers, a big name, Weird Al, Three Dog Night, Gaither Vocal Band, Jeff Fox, Really Larry the Cable Guy, and then Justin Moore, Lee Bryce, another big one. And then you have the family shows with the Bull Riding and the Globe Trotters are just some of the highlights there. So now, we'll move on to FY18, so you can kind of see where we're leaning. Now, this is nine actual months and three projected months for April, May, June, as April just finished up. So you'll see the direct event revenue and ancillary revenue is going to be up from where we were this past fiscal, past fiscal year. With that, though, comes an increase in event operating expenses, but ultimately, an increase in event operating income, which we'll see on a couple slides from now, of about $100,000. Other income sponsorship, about similar to where we were in FY17, but also a higher net operating income. Indirect expenses up slightly, but not a ton, and a projected subsidy right now is about a $10,000 improvement on where we were from FY17. And that just kind of gives a little comparison. FY17, about a $502,000 operating deficit, and it'll be about closer to $490 for FY18. And just looking at the chart with the numbers, so a number of events this year have, you know, increased back to, similar to where we were FY16, so an 8% increase. Event operating income, we talked about it being up about $100,000, an 18% increase. Operating expenses are up a little bit from last year, but still down from FY16, and then other incomes about the same, so giving us that operating deficit about 2% better and $10,000 lower than the previous year. Some of the marquee events from FY18, Dancing with the Stars, Oak Ridge Boys, really excited to have the Air Force Anniversary Ball there last year, REO Speedwagon, Oklahoma Arts Council Conference, which was great for driving hotel traffic and hotel rooms, along with Mark Lowry and the Oklahoma Baptist Convention as well, Manheim Steamroller, Casting Crowns, and this is only the events that were from the beginning of the fiscal year through the end of April. So just to reiterate what our goals and the benefits are of the Central National Bank Center, raise the quality of life, help make Enid a destination city. Our goal is to attract strategic, regional, local, and statewide events, ultimately help growing downtown Enid. And I'd say this is probably one of the most important ones, bringing in the additional sales tax and hotel tax to Enid, which ultimately helps the taxpayer. How we come up with some of these numbers and how we track who's coming in from out of town, we get zip codes for any ticketed purchased event, so it allows us to track what zip codes everyone's coming from. And with that, we know at least 16% of our patrons are coming for ticketed events from outside the area. It's a little tougher on the non-ticketed events. We're relying heavily on the organizers of these events, but we could say about 20% of patrons from non-ticketed events come from outside the area, and we estimate that about $1.3 million in revenue is generated off guests visiting Enid due to the Central National Bank Center, whether that be overnight stays, money that those people coming to Enid are spending at the restaurants, retail. And, you know, I think what's not even factored into this, which is a pretty important number two, is how many people are staying in Enid for their entertainment, for their conferences, for their meetings, instead of having to go outside of Enid and taking those tax dollars outside of the city.
Is that gross revenue and not sales tax revenue?
What was that?
Go back to the 1.3 million.
Yep, right here.
Is that gross revenue and not sales tax revenue?
Correct. That's gross revenue, well, yeah, gross revenue.
It's an estimate of sales tax and hotel tax revenues generated by the activity down there that's not captured directly in the CNB Center's numbers.
Right.
In other words, when people stay in hotels, we do our best to try and track that. That money doesn't come directly to the city. When they buy food downtown or someplace else, that doesn't come directly to the city, but it generates self-tax revenue. That's the number we're trying to capture to show people there is an indirect impact of having it down there.
So just taking a quick look at the future here, the next few months coming up. Just announced a couple or a few concerts. We have Easton Corbin coming up, June 14th, June 30th, Newsboys, and a couple other bigger events in there. Ron White coming up on May 18th, and then some other stuff on the convention side of the facility as well. The Mayor's Conference will be here in June, and along with a handful of other events that we have going on. We get through the beginning of July, the Oklahoma City Thunder are working with us to put on and host a youth basketball camp at the facility. We also have another basketball event, the Mid-America Youth Basketball Event, which brings in 27 youth teams in the summer that are all staying in hotels for three nights. Enid Comic-Con, a first-time event that is, has been very well received, and Ronnie Millsap just announced on Monday, coming September 23rd. And just a little tease, Monday and Tuesday, we will have two more show announcements coming up, so stay tuned. Any questions?
Can you expand a little bit on your sponsorship income? Is that something that's a uniform amount from year to year? Does it change?
It does change. You know, our sponsorship contracts range anywhere from a year to however many years working with the local businesses, so it's stuff that we are constantly looking to add to and increase. You know, I think we've done a really good job of building up a number that's really high for a lot of buildings, and I also think that we do a really good job of retaining the sponsors year over year. A lot of times, I think that's the biggest thing, is once you have someone on board, keeping them on board is a lot easier and working with them and developing those partnerships than trying to go out and find a lot of new partnerships. So that's something we take a lot of...
I understand the naming rights, I guess, but what other than that?
So there's, you know, if you walk into especially the event center side of the Central National Bank Center, and you see all the different advertisements on the walls, that's a good part of it. On all the TVs around the facilities, there's ads. The back of your tickets, you're going to see a couple of different ads and coupons, tables around the concourse, things like that. And then other partners we have, you know, with someone like a Coca-Cola, you know, that were serving Coca-Cola products in the facility, things like that.
Have you booked anything in anticipation of a new hotel?
We are, we are working on three events at the moment that is active. I mean, we've been making a lot of phone calls, reaching out to a lot of people. We've kind of been hitting that list of people that, when it looked like there was first going to be a hotel, we had developed a pretty good list and have gone back to that, now saying, here's actual groundwork, and not just a sign up there, so that we are able to show that stuff is happening and this is legit. So we have three solid leads right now, one that's on the books and two others that's looking. The nice, or the tough but nice thing about it is, it's long lead business. A lot of these conventions, conferences are planning, have their next year or two planned, so they're planning two to five years out, some that long. So the ones we're looking at won't even be for FY19 at this point, they'll be for fiscal year 20, but that's just kind of how the cycle goes, where we need to be forward thinkers looking for fiscal year 20, 21, 22 to develop these. We do, even without a hotel, have two major conferences booked for November, which is pretty exciting, and then we'll start working on hopefully those three for FY20, so.
What are the three for FY20 again?
We're working on, the City Managers Conference is the big one. We have a church conference that we're working on, and then a civic group regional convention as well. So those are the three where...
I think Jenny will be getting with you from the library, because she said that the librarians might be interested in moving the state conference here in 2020.
That is one we have on our list, because I believe they were one that was, if not booked, close to booking when that original hotel was supposed to happen, and didn't work out because the hotel didn't break ground.
Maybe we get the Bar Association here in 2020.
We're pretty much go to our own building in Oklahoma City.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
Item five, discuss the 2018, 2019 budget schedule. Aaron. Surprises.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. It's that time again to start budget schedule. The Oklahoma State statute sets out some requirements on timing of when that has to happen every year. 30 days prior to the, or the start of a new fiscal year, we have to present a budget to the governing body. 15 days prior to the new fiscal year, host a budget hearing. Five days prior, that has to be advertised and circulation, a popular reading in the area, and budget approval has to happen no later than seven days before the beginning of the new cycle. That's tough for us to get everything done and close out the year, so we like to try and back that up. And so, based on that, this is the calendar of when we're looking at everything. This past Friday, you should have received your draft of the budget document that was distributed to all of you last Friday, both electronically and paper copies made available. We start the actual budget meetings this Thursday at 5:00 in the evening. There's another, two meetings scheduled next week, one on Monday at 11:00, one on Thursday at 10:00, and we will also plan on having the budget hearing next Thursday at 10:00. And with tentative budget approval on the meeting on the 15th, of course, if we're not ready, and you guys are not ready and happy with the product, at that point, we can always push back to the June 5th meeting. That would just mean we need to pass it with an emergency so that we have appropriations available come July 1. Each of the nights, this is what I'm planning on speaking about, or other staff members relevant to their budget. So for this week, we'll talk about the budget in general as an overview with all funds rolled together and how that looks, and then touch on the individuals. There's 22 funds that we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about eight of them the first night. General Fund Health, the Vance Development Authority, the CBG Fund, Sinking Fund Gulf, the Municipal Authority, and the Public Transportation Authority. Then Monday, when we come in, we plan on talking about capital improvement. Chris Kudansky and his staff will be covering all of those projects that have been budgeted, as well as there's some public works and public utilities projects budgeted in those funds for this next year, and he'll go over all of those for you, and then wrap up on May the 10th with the remaining funds. So we have airport, the event center, police and fire, and then EEDA, and we'll have Brent Kissling here from ERDA to give an update on their information. So I'm really just trying to get feedback on any specific areas tonight that you would like addressed so that we have that research done and present it to you as we go through these funds.
We usually end up with a map showing all the sites that we have road work planned as part of one of those sessions. If that's all ready, put together, might be nice to ship that out.
Okay. Any other feedback on areas?
Really excited.
That's my scares, Ben.
Yeah.
Hey, Aaron may have just asked too, we have a plan of what we would like to talk to you about, but as always, this is going to end up being your budget that you approve openly, so we anticipate that you...
I will derail it one of these nights.
Yes. And so if there's something specific that we haven't talked about that you want to talk about, if you let us know, we can better prepare for it. Otherwise, we'll just...
No, we don't ever know until it comes up.
Yeah.
All right.
And then we all argue about it.
We are very good at improvising.
It's more fun.
I guess that's the word. That's what I was looking for. Fun.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Item six, discuss sound amplification violation ordinance.
I didn't think we had one of those.
Mayor Commissioners, if you would like, we can discuss the items six, seven, and eight together. They all, in reality, do the same thing. Previously, the city had a schedule of fines, or class of fines, A, B, C, D, that went throughout the entire ordinance, through our entire ordinances, and what these three do is remove some language in there that still referred to the classes of fines, and then enumerates the particular fine for each violation. So instead of saying class A fine, which didn't tell you what the fine was, since we removed the classes of fines, it now tells you what those violations are and what the penalty for them is.
Easy.
On the sound amplification ordinance, it reduces the, it reduces the fine from 750 to 200 because it seemed a little excessive.
It seemed like it.
That. The emergency management one removes it from a class A fine to a $500, $500 fine plus costs. The discussed theft of cable ordinance, the cable ordinance does the same thing, changes it from a class A fine to a $500 fine. Ending your questions, that's all I have at the moment.
You.
Thank you.
Do we need to go to item eight?
That was already covered.
Yep, he just talked about it. Yeah, all three.
Say that again.
All three, he covered them very quickly because they're really actually doing the same thing.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
We must be at number nine.
Right.
We are adjourned, we'll meet upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel 12 and in high definition on channel 112. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of Enid website at enid.org.